The Gondorath State of LNI has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of Glendale, uh, village of Glendale Heights, has determined that an in-person meeting for the August 19, 2021 village board meeting is not practical and prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the August 19, 2021 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony during the meetings. Signed, Chowdhury M. Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated August 19, 2021. I would like to call this village board meeting uh, on Thursday, August 19, 2021 to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now go on to, uh, the petitions and communications. Number one, community announcement. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, President Koker.
You're welcome, Mr. Trustee.
The village of Glendale Heights is looking for hardworking individuals to join our team. We are now offering a variety of career opportunities for both full-time and part-time positions. The Parks, Recreation and Facilities Department is now hiring for a variety of recreation positions. The Center for Senior Citizens is hiring for customer service associates. And lastly, the Glendale Lakes Golf Club is hiring cooks, waitstaff and a dishwasher. For more information on these job opportunities or for additional career postings, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357. The next coffee and chat with the mayor and village board will be Saturday, October 2nd, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Please note, there is no coffee and chat with the mayor and village board in September due to the Labor Day holiday. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui, please.
Thank you, Mr. Koo.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual citizens' police academy beginning Tuesday, September 7th. The citizens' police academy gives participants a realistic view of police work by providing instructions and education on real-life police trainings, arrest, self-defense tactics, firearm safety and more. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, please contact Connie Mars at 630-909-5436 or Sergeant Mike Pentecost at 630-909-5457. West Nile virus. In a recent test done by DuPage County, there are reports of increased presence of West Nile virus in the DuPage County community. The DuPage County Health Department is encouraging residents to protect themselves from mosquito bites and the risk of contracting the West Nile virus. The best way to prevent West Nile virus is to avoid mosquito bites and follow the four D's of defense. Defend yourself with deed repellence, dress in long sleeves and pants, drain standing water and protect yourself during dusk and dawn. For more information, please contact the DuPage County Health Department at www.dupagehealth.org. Thank you.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, September 11th at 7:15 p.m. as we honor and remember the 20th anniversary of Patriot Day. We'll have a silent parade of first responder vehicles along Fullerton Avenue, beginning at Ruskin School and ending with a ceremony at Village Hall. We invite the community to honor all those who we had lost on this tragic day 20 years ago. For more information, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5302. The village of Glendale Heights is revving up for the 38th Annual Show Shine Car Show, Swap Meet, Camera Park, Sunday, September 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display, along with a swap meet, food and music. If you're interested, interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. Thank you.
Uh, Clerk Schmidt, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights and the village board relies on the community to let us know if you see something of concern. When submitting a concern in writing to any of our departments or your district trustee, we do ask that you please include your name along with phone number or email address. This will help us ask additional questions for clarification and gives us the chance to follow up with you. If you have any questions about how to report a concern, contacting your district trustee or any other forms of communication, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Maritato, please.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, invites you for the return of the annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, September 19th, with a nine o'clock shotgun start at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund and the Glendale Heights Foundation. If you would like more information, wish to become a host sponsor, join us for dinner or make a Raffle Prize donation, please call Glendale Heights Golf Club at 630-260-0018 or the mayor's office at 630-909-5302. Help us make the 21st Annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. Thank you.
Excuse me, uh, Trustee Maritato, if I might, um, I thought I heard you say September 19th. It's actually September 17th.
Oh, I'm sorry, September 17th.
Yeah.
Did I say 19th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. September 17th.
That's okay.
Is that okay, Mary?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make mistakes.
Uh, Trustee Project, please. Trustee Project, please.
Come out to Camera Park, September 16th through the 26th for Oktoberfest. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing, entertainers and other family-friendly activities. For more information, including the hours, entertainment schedule and admission fees, Join the Glendale Heights Police Department on Friday, August 20th, from 5:00 a.m. to noon, as we help raise funds for the Illinois Special Olympics at Coffee for Champions. The Glendale Heights Police Department is teaming up with both, uh, with both of the Dunkin' Donuts in Glendale Heights to sell merchandise, solicit donations, all benefiting the Illinois Special Olympics. If you have any questions, please contact Officers Zack Pew at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Welcome. Uh, Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Aquatic Center is only open on the weekends from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. until our final day of the season on Monday, September the 6th. Rates start at $7 for residents. Masks will continue to be required for all patrons as they enter and leave the facilities, but they can be removed when gifts have found a social distance location on the pool deck. So stop by and enjoy the remainder of the summer at the Glendale Heights Aquatic Center. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There is a proclamation to proclaim August 31st, 2021 as International Overdose Awareness Day. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation.
Yep.
Is there any objection?
Go forward.
No.
Go ahead.
We now move to, uh, presentation former VFW Post 2377 Commander, Mr. Bill Wolf is here tonight to, uh, present former village president, Ms. Linda Jackson with an award of appreciation. Mr. Wolf, will you please come forward and make your presentation? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, village board. I, I'm proud to be here, standing in front of you, find people with all the work that you do.
You're welcome, sir.
Now, if I could, yeah, our former mayor up here. On behalf of Glendale Heights Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2377, we just wanted to say thank you. Um, the plaque reads, and I'll read it for everyone, "A testimonial of sincere appreciation presented to Linda Jackson in honor and with deep re-appreciation of the distinguished and unselfish service given to the residents of Glendale Heights and the members of Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2377, all while saving, serving the residents of Glendale Heights with outstanding leadership, vision, ability as a mayor for the past 20 years." Linda, congratulations.
Thank you so very much for this, but all my heart and appreciation, everything goes to our servicemen, our police, our fire. Without you guys, you've given your all. Some have given more than their all. And we owe you, not this, but thank you so very much. It's absolutely beautiful.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? We will continue with the consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you, uh, would you, would our village administrator, Mr. Michael Marin, Mike Marin, please read the consent agenda?
Absolutely, Mayor. Uh, number one is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August 5th, 2021. Oops. Number two is the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for August 5th, 2021. Number three, the approval of the accounts payable listing of August 19th, 2021, in the amount of $2,119,798.10. Number four is a resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, adopting first quarter fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget amendments. This would be Resolution 2021-R-83. Number five is a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for Professional Engineering Services for the 2021 Motor-Fuel Tech Street Program in the village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2021-R-84. Number six is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for tree removal and disposal services and emergency tree removal and disposal services with Homer Tree Care Incorporated. This is Resolution 2021-R-85. And number seven would be the approval.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? First, uh, Mary, Trustee Schroder.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, uh, Trustee Siddiqui. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so we will move on to new business. New business. Number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1 entitled, "A Government of Goods and Services", of Title III entitled, "Finance and Taxation of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Surplus Property," first reading. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? So there's no one to, uh, from the public, so I will move to adjourn this meeting. First, uh, Trustee Schroder.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Trustee Mari, uh, Mary Part, uh, sorry, Patine, Trustee Pat, Maritato, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schmidt, you have the committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the committee of the whole of, um, forgot the date here. August 19th, 2021 to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Light?
Um, one, Proud and Progressive, and two, I just found my notes, um, Streets.
Trustee Pojak? Okay, there being no other. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the committee on any item? Please state your name and complete address.
Chris Epstein, 1425 Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. I have a question for Joanne. With regards to the transition into the rental properties and the sales of the properties, the inspections that are being done, how does the person that does a rehab fall into that? Are they going to be treated? Because a lot of times when rehabbers, they may be discovering stuff behind, and I would rather have that, you know, behind the wall and everything like that, if that's what they're actually doing.
Uh, so the rental program is not proposed to change at all.
Right.
Uh, so this, the village board is considering the, um, haven't made the final decision that to change the real estate transfer inspection. Every real estate transfer will be handled the same way. So whether it's a rehab or a person selling to someone else, it'll be inspected. And if there was work done without a permit, permits will be required. Some of the other information, things that are found will be informational only. Uh, and then the same thing would go if a rehabber then sells it to someone else, it would be the same exact process.
So there will be two inspections done on rehabbed properties?
Um, so the, when the rehabber purchases the property, it, there is a real estate transfer, any time a property changes hands. So any sale, so when they purchase it and then again, when they choose to sell it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, one other thing I want to bring up, I was very embarrassed, sitting in the audience last week and watching one of the representatives of our town basically, um, taking, you know, issue with two of the people, one other person on the board and you, President Koker. I believe it was very unprofessional being done that way. Also, did the discussion of personnel items should have been done behind closed doors. And I think that person was a very big embarrassment to this community for the comments that person made. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the committee? Okay, there being none. The committee recommendations from the plan commission, a recommendation to approve a conditional use in the I-Lite Industrial District to allow outside storage of one oxygen tank at 1749 Paul Avenue. That's the Hydeck Technology Corporation.
Uh, Hydeck Corporation has requested a conditional use to allow an oxygen tank at the rear of their building, uh, so it, uh, which does require a conditional use permit. The plan commission considered it, it would not impact any parking, uh, and, uh, the plan commission did vote to rec, unanimously to recommend approval.
Anybody on the, the board have any discussion? Trustee Maritato?
I'll move it to the board for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Okay, number two, plan commission recommendation, a recommendation to approve an annual entertainment permit to provide live entertainment indoors on Sunday through Thursday nights from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Fridays and Saturdays, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and provide live entertainment outdoors, September and October, during the annual Oktoberfest event only, Fridays and Saturdays from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. and Sundays, 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., which will consist of a small musical group playing primarily traditional European music for schnitzel plats located at 729 East North Avenue. Trustee Pojak?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Pojak, if, um, or I guess, uh, Trustee Schmidt, may I, uh, make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Uh, just to point a clarification, that the plan commission did recommend approval of the request. Uh, there were, there was quite a bit of discussion at the plan commission member, at the plan commission meeting regarding conditions, uh, and, but the plan commission did not move it forward with any conditions of approval, but I just wanted to make sure that the village board was aware of those potential conditions. Uh, the Schnitzel Plats currently has a entertainment permit to allow entertainment inside the building until 10:00 p.m. The current request is to allow entertainment outside on the patio until 11:00 p.m. Uh, so there was some discussion of bringing it, changing the hours to 10:00 p.m. to match what's inside or to allow the, and it did get approved, recommended for the 11:00 p.m. Uh, there was also discussion about, uh, having the canopies, that there's canopies on the building, uh, I'm sorry, there's canopy, uh, that the outdoor patio and to put the sides of the canopy down to muffle some of the noise and then to limit amplification. So those were three comments, uh, that were not included in the condition. I just wanted to make sure the, the village board was aware of those.
Thank you, Joanne. Trustee Maritato?
I, you know, I don't know, it's not my district, but I mean, are there any residents, was that the plan commission?
There were. There were, uh, two, uh, women spoke in opposition, um, and there were other people there, I don't know their feelings, if they were, uh, positive or negative.
Okay, so are, are we going to stop it at 10 o'clock at night? Is that what we have to, I mean, this is going to go on for two months?
It would, right.
Every weekend.
So the, the proposal is for the weekends during Oktoberfest, uh, and the current recommendation is 11:00 p.m. So that was the, that's what the plan commission recommended. So I just wanted, so that's your call if you want to stop it earlier.
Okay, they recommend it 11:00 o'clock?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Definitely.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
President Koker?
Yes.
Okay, that will go to the full board. Number three, plan commission recommendation, a recommendation to approve the following text amendments to the village of Glendale Heights zoning ordinance. Section 11 dash 2 dash 2, as it pertains to the definition of outdoor storage and accessory outdoor storage. Section 11 dash 4 dash 12, as it pertains to temporary uses. Section 11 dash 4 dash 13, as it pertains to general business regulations and accessory outdoor storage. Section 11 dash 10B dash 2, as it pertains to accessory outdoor storage as a permitted use in the C2 Community Commercial District. Section 11 dash 10C dash 2, as it pertains to accessory outdoor storage as a permitted use in the C3 General Commercial District. And section 11 dash 11D dash 2, as it pertains to accessory outdoor storage as a permitted use in the I-Lite Industrial District. Trustee Light?
I'll move it to the board with her recommendation, concur.
Second.
Trustee Schroder, second. Is there any discussion? Trustee Maritato?
Joanne, you're gonna have to run this whole thing by us, because to me, it makes no sense.
Okay, uh, so there's two, well, there's three main proposals. The first one is for the temporary use is, uh, to allow things like Kris Kringle markets and, uh, farmers markets and things like that. I don't think that's the, the main question. The other two are related to outdoor storage. So right now, outdoor storage is a conditional use in the commercial districts and the industrial district. So, um, any, and conditional uses, as you know, have to go to the plan commission, have a public hearing and then receive village board action and they're evaluated for adverse impact. The issue that we have found, uh, is that the ordinance has no definition of what outdoor storage is. So, um, what we did is we created a definition because we have had issues with people in the past, uh, disagreeing with staff on what constitutes outdoor storage. One of those is, is truck rental, truck and equipment rental. We have had some people say, in their opinion, truck rental is not outdoor storage, it's just part of the business. It's just display. And... And staff has held firm that truck rental is outdoor storage and does require conditional use. So that's why we added that definition of outdoor storage, just to clarify that all outdoor storage, what it includes, which is storage of equipment, material, including truck rental, requires village board, or Plan Commission public hearing, and village board approval. So that was the first part of it, to clarify, to define outdoor storage and clarify that. The second part of it is accessory outdoor storage. So there's some uses, actually on the agenda tonight for Hydeck. They wanted to put an ox, a small oxygen tank behind the building. It complies with the fire code, it complies with the building code, it doesn't move, impact required minimum parking. Staff is of the opinion, in order to be a little more business friendly, that should be permitted. If it's accessory to, if it's accessory to the principal building, and it had meets, we put some criteria in the, the definition, that it can't be any higher than the building, can't interfere with parking, can't, has to be in the rear yard, can't be adjacent to residential, that those minimal outdoor storage, accessory starts, outdoor storage should be permitted uses. So I apologize for the confusion. So it's two, it's minor accessory outdoor storage would be permitted, and then full outdoor storage that has impacts, such as truck rental, such as things that take up parking, such as things that are adjacent to residential, would continue to require a conditional use.
Okay. But, but, the way I see this, we are allowing, with this new ordinance, we are allowing anybody to apply for, like, like a truck rental, or any specific thing with a truck, we're allowing anybody to apply for it, which before, we did not.
There's no change. We have always allowed, anybody could apply, we've always held fast that, that truck rental is a condition, is considered outdoor storage. And outdoor storage is listed as a conditional use in the commercial districts and in I. So there's not a change. We have, so, as you know, our MS, as an example, at Self-Storage World, they applied to have the truck rental. We said, that's outdoor storage, you have to apply to, to have that permission. So it's, it's not a change. It's, in our mind, it's making it clear, when people have said, no, I don't need to, I'm entitled to do that, in our opinion, they're not entitled to do that. They have to get specific approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
Trustee Pojak?
Joanne, that'll have to go to the Plan Commission first, correct?
Absolutely.
And then to the board?
Correct. Public hearing, all adjacent property owners need to be notified, public hearing before the Plan Commission, and then to the committee, the whole and village board.
And then the board makes the final decision, yes or no?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Joanne.
Trustee Light?
Joanne, how does it affect if there was a tow yard or something like such, a tow business, would they have to get a conditional use to have their tow trucks outside?
Yes.
As, as storage, okay. I'm just making sure. Thank you.
Joanne, would this cover something like a diesel powered auxiliary generator for standby power?
That would be, depending on the size. You know better than I do that some of them can be quite large, some are very small. The smaller ones, the, the standby generators, smaller than the height of the building, if they're not adjacent to residential, would be considered accessory outdoor storage and would only need a building permit.
Thank you.
So that's a prime example of what it seems to set, take them through a three-month process is excessive.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? We have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Coker?
Yes.
We have an item here.
I'm sorry. Call my name.
Oh, I know.
For you?
Okay.
I'm a new guy.
New guy.
I am, sorry.
That's fine.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Mr. newbie?
I'm sorry.
We have a, an item added here, proud and progressive.
Do we have to do discussions now, or no?
Yes. Well, I'll continue this, then we'll have discussion.
All right. Proud and progressive, this is kind of directed towards our, our PR department, I'm guessing. You know, we've, we've always said we're a proud, progressive village, you know, for all. I would like to maybe look at the all that are involved in the village, the people, the residents, the ones that make up our, our wonderful home. We've had some people that have gone, you know, above and beyond, and become, you know, superstars, movie stars, sports stars, TV stars, rock stars even. We've had many people that have done all sorts of really cool things, and that sometimes they go unnoticed. And I was discussing with Mike Maron tonight, that, you know, it'd be kind of neat to be able to identify these people in some way, and, and a vetted way of, you know, picking out the ones, you know, you know, yeah, we're all proud of our kids, they made the honor roll, but these are people that maybe have gone, you know, to, to the extreme, and, and have come from our hometown. So I just thought it'd be kind of neat if we can maybe look into a possible program to where we could put something like in a newsletter, a simple blurb about, you know, well, like Billy Corrigan, you know, he's from Glendale Heights, he spent many years here in town, gone on to be a rock star. There are other people I know that have gone on to movies and are still doing TV shows. And it was, I thought it'd be kind of neat to be able to identify, and maybe somehow or another, you know, give them a little acknowledgement that they did something extra special and came from town. Who was it, Mike, that you said came, was just taken to the Cleveland Browns?
Oh, yeah. Greg Newsom. He's, grew up here, went to middle school, elementary school here in Glendale Heights, and was drafted in the first round by the Cleveland Browns.
Stuff like that, that I, you know, I think would be kind of neat, if we can maybe look into a program, you know, to identify these people, maybe have them, you know, obviously, it'll meet a certain criteria in order to, you know, to say, hey, these are really incredibly and wonderful people that have done something, and we should be proud of what they've, where they've come from, and let them know that. That was the only thing I had come up with, I'd really like to work with PR on something like this, you know, if it's possible. Would you do that with me, David? Do it? Thank you. I would like that. That was really all I had for that. The other one was just, me again?
You again.
Streets. Okay. This, I just found my note. North Brandon, Rachel, is, I was looking at the curb cut on the south side of the street. I was kind of shocked at how tall it was. It was extremely, it looked out of place, and I stopped to look at, and then I, it never fails, every time I stop somewhere, I get residents that find me, and they all ask the same question, why is this so much higher and so much out of, looks odd, way out of shape, like really tall, we'd actually bury a fire hydrant, which is next to it, because the curb is above the fire hydrant. The sidewalk is odd, everything is really weird.
It's the intersection of?
Brandon and Bloomingdale Road on the south side.
Okay. Yeah, it's the intersection of Bloomingdale Road and Brandon. It was the county that has asked the village to redesign that intersection on the sidewalk to keep it as ADA, and that's necessitated the curb being increased to the height it has. It's still being in design, we're looking at possibly changing the island now in Brandon Drive itself, but the, but the request came in from the county because we were working in that intersection.
Because I know the island itself will be below the grade of the curb, and the water runoff towards the back, the Omen Pool Building is right there, they were concerned because they have standing water now, and the amount of water that they'd be receiving from that, that extra, I guess.
Sebel are out there right now, looking at the design, and they're taking topographical shots to see how it's going to flow the, the water.
Yeah, I would really like to look into that, because a lot of people are really, I couldn't believe how fast that, they congregated, it was really pretty quick. Of course, they did have an event going on that day, which is probably my fault for stopping, and.
The request came from the county, and Sebel currently are under design, looking into how that can transition. But the problem is, is the ADA existing sidewalk on Bloomingdale Road, it doesn't, it's not within ADA.
Which is strange, because the pitch of that, going up to Bloomingdale Road will be increased, and it'll be even harder to get up that little bit of hill in order to get to that part of the sidewalk, it just looked very unusual.
I think they would transition it, I think what they've laid now would comply with ADA. How they've, how they've constructed that sidewalk and curb would comply with ADA. They now need to look at the elevations on the road, on Bloomingdale Road and Brandon, which is what they're looking at.
Yeah, it was just, it looks way out of sorts, it didn't look right. I had another trustee also look at it and said the same thing, it just looked really out of sorts. And then, we'll talk more on that later, definitely. And then, my only thing was the cul-de-sacs on North Brandon. Now we're gonna, we'll do those, the island's in the middle, which I think really, the, I talked to two residents, they loved the idea, but the question came up, is there going to be a one-way around that, and is there going to be a stop sign at one side?
No, the road itself, the lane that goes around the island will be, is at least 24 feet wide, so they should be able to get two, two cars through.
So it'll be considered both directions, so no stop sign there?
No, no, it's not needed.
Okay. Just making, I know it's not a high-traffic area.
Four feet wide, the, the lanes will be 24 feet wide around the island, so there shouldn't be a need for that.
Yeah, I drove it, I really liked it, it looked really cool. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Pojak?
First of all, I'm going to thank Doug Flynn, Chief Flynn, for sending some officers to the funeral in Chicago today. It was very, very nice to, for to represent the police department and Glendale Heights residents, so, thank you very, very much. And the other thing I have is for probably Bill Pauling, all the water meters have been replaced?
No, sir, not yet. There's still a handful that are, not many, probably less than 20.
What's happening with those? It's been, they got whiskers already.
We're, we're tackling them kind of location by location. Some residents have still indicated that they're not comfortable with staff coming in because of COVID concerns. We're just working with them one by one.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
We'll move on to discussion?
Bill?
Oh, Pat? I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to get back to that curb ratio, I think maybe you should have, have the engineers go out there and take a look at it, because there's definitely something wrong there. The curb is, that, that curb put in is not right.
They have already surveyed it. They, engineers have been out already surveying it. Trustee Maritata, the engineers have been out there surveying it the last three days, so they're fully aware of the situation. And their proposal right now, where the curb has been set, it would, it would be in compliance with ADA, and they could get the elevations of the existing road to work. So they are fully involved with it, and are coming up with a solution of how to address that intersection.
Well, if they don't lower that curb, ain't nothing going to work, if they don't drop that curb. So, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but.
Well, they've been out there yesterday.
I, I kind of know that, I kind of know that work. But yeah, if, if, if they, if they're going to make all that water run out of there, great.
They're looking at it. They are looking at it, and they're working with the county.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Now we move on to discussion regarding fireworks on September 19th, 2021. Mr. Maron?
Yes. At the request of some of the board members, we took a look at the potential of having a smaller fireworks display on the day of the car show. Oktoberfest will be occurring at the same time. Director Knouts has the proposal, and if this meets with your expectations, I can sign the contract, it's, it's within my authority to do. If this meets with your expectations tonight, we'll sign the contract and bring a permit back at the September 2nd meeting.
Keith?
Yeah. So as we discussed last time, we got a proposal from the people who did the tree lighting ceremony last year, and we have a proposal for a approximately 16-minute firework spectacular. There are over 4,000 shells in that 16 minutes, so it's very robust. And the plan is that they would go ahead, schedule this, we would put a time together, we need to figure out the details of exactly what time. I've already talked to them also about potential, if there is a rain date for the car show, that we would be able to move it to follow that as well.
Is, is this going to be after the car show?
Mike?
At night? Yeah, but I mean, the car show is going to be gone?
Yes.
Yes.
The guys will be cleared by then.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, how, how much we are paying for this?
The proposal that we got was for 15,000 dollars.
So here is one thing which I don't understand, like, last week we were discussing that we are in financial crunch, and I believe Mr. Maron, you briefed us that how we lost one of our, you know, McKesson, which pays.
Which pays a good deal in sales tax, in home rule tax, yes.
Correct, yes. So this 16,000, I think it's per minute, if I would say. It's like $1,000 per minute we are going to spend. So I really don't know, do we have that amount of money to spend just for 16-minute fireworks?
The money exists in the budget for that type of a, a display. Again, it's, it's up to the board as to whether or not they want to move forward with that.
That money can be used for any other purpose as well, correct?
Correct. It's in the general fund, it could be.
I, I, I kind of look at it like, I mean, with the COVID, people been, I mean, people have not been doing anything in town, so I mean, so if you give them something.
Yeah, but I mean.
I understand where, I understand where you're coming from, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to disagree with you, but I mean, I, we got to give the residents something in, in the village.
That's right.
You know, let them, let them come out and have fun for 16 minutes. You know, I mean, that's, that's how I look at it, but I don't know how everybody else does.
But here's one of my concerns also, because we, we canceled our fest due to the security concerns. So Chief, I want to ask you, is that going to pull a crowd, these fireworks, and is, is that something which you think is going to be issue? Because we canceled the, the fest because of this reason.
Yeah, it's two different events. Fest, the crowd is there mainly, a large part for the carnival, and they come for the fireworks. The carnival is a completely different animal, if you will, than the fireworks. Traditionally, when we've had a rain out of fest during, fireworks during fest, and then had to move our fireworks display to that Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, the crowds have been, um.
Great.
They've been very manageable, they've been very accommodating, they're there to watch the fireworks. Last, two years ago, we had that rain out on Monday, we had some food vendors there. It was actually one of the better events that I've been part of in a long time, here. So, you know, the, the crowd for fireworks, not, not part of Summer Fest, have been great, and very manageable. We've been able to do it with really minimal officers and volunteers.
Henry? Trustee Pojak?
Yeah, Chairman, I, I think, as long as it's 15 minutes, like we had at the tree lighting ceremony, I'm in all in favor of it. It's not that bad. We have to give our residents something this year, period. So I'm in favor of it. So I'm in favor of it.
I agree with you, Cholter.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. It's not just 15 minutes, it's about three to four hour. People, you know, when they are having amusement, they are having joy, and I believe our residents deserve, you know, something to come out and celebrate, you know? And this is a very good opportunity so people can get some amusement and get some hour from their home, you know? They can socialize, they can eat food, they can talk with each other, so on. So I am in favor of that. I'm always in the favor of residents for the amusement, for the enjoyment, without limitations. So as Chief Flint has mentioned, that is manageable, so I will go ahead, you know? Thanks.
Don, do we need a motion on this?
Sure, yeah, as, as Michael said, the, it's within his authority, so, but I still think a motion would be in order to approve the contract and the fireworks display for, I don't know, was a date certain mentioned, Bill? I don't remember.
September 19th.
September 19th. Okay, for September 19th.
Okay. Trustee Maritata?
I make a motion to approve the contract for, what, September?
19th.
September 19th.
19th.
Saqar, Mr. Pojack Saqar.
Trustee Pojack? Okay, may we have a roll call vote? Any discussion, any further discussion?
I, I have some.
Yes, Mary?
I just want to ask you something. I'm guilty of not going to the car show. Are there a lot of people that attend that car show?
Yes.
And the reason why I'm asking is because these fireworks are in conjunction with the car show. Other, and I'm not saying that there aren't a lot of people, or there are. I, I told you, I've never been to, I haven't attended the car show, I'm ashamed to say, but I haven't. Is there a nice crowd at the car shows?
The, the car show itself would normally draw anywhere from 150, I'm gonna guess 150 to 180 cars, most, two people per car plus residents that come through, and we also have, at the same time, we also have our garage sale going on adjacent to us also. So it's a very, very busy time, along with Oktoberfest going on, it's a very busy time. But the car show won't affect anything for the fireworks part of it, they'll be long gone because they'll be done by 3:30 in the afternoon. Some stay to go to Oktoberfest, and that's usually, you know, one or two that'll hang out for a while, but that's about it. Most of this will be just for the residents as far as the fireworks go and their families.
The reason why I ask is, I think I mentioned this at one of our other meetings, we had to, fireworks once after the Summer Fest because of the rain, we weren't able to have it, and it was a tremendous success, but we did have vendors there selling food, and I think that's what brought the people to this affair. But at least Oktoberfest will be selling food or doing something, so that may attract a bigger crowd. Otherwise, I feel the same way, 15,000 for 15 minutes is a lot of money, not that our residents aren't worth it, they certainly are, but if there's not enough residents there, you're defeating your purpose.
I'm sure the word will get out, I'm sure people will.
All right, we'll find it.
Know it, you know?
Are we gonna advertise it, or like we're gonna send some?
I don't know.
No? Okay.
Believe me, believe me, there'll be plenty of people there believing, word of mouth is.
There, there, the, the intention is to, to advertise, yes, but we want to do it more locally, and we do want to set expectations. One thing is important to note is that this is not the Summer Fest, excuse me, the Glendale Heights Fest fireworks display. This is a smaller version. The largest shell is going to be three inches, I believe, and smaller, and so smaller. So, so while there's 4,000 shells, it is not nearly as large as the Summer Fest display, which normally lasts about 20 minutes, and Keith, roughly, how many shells?
Over 6,000 on most occasions.
Yeah, so it's, it's, so we definitely want to manage the expectations. I don't want our residents or anyone else that comes to see the display to go, oh, wow, that's not normally what they have. It's not. It would, but it will still be a very good display. Anyone who saw the, the Christmas display knows that you can still do a lot and have a lot of impact with fireworks and pyrotechnics with smaller shells and, and a lot of them. So there are smaller shells, which decreases the cost, but there's a lot of them. So I just, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the expectations before. I don't want anyone to be disappointed, but I think they will be duly impressed with what we put on.
So usually in the Glendale Heights Fest, how long the fireworks was, is it like a 45 minutes, 30 minutes?
The Sunday display, and I think Keith has, has better information, he deals with the pyrotechnic guy.
Yeah, I would say the Sunday display ranges between, we've done it as little as 23 minutes, but the last one I think was 25 or 26.
Okay.
And I would assume that since our Glendale Heights Fest takes place in the middle of July, and this will be the middle of September, that the display will start earlier time-wise?
Yes, yes, it will.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritata?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack? Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Coker?
Yes.
Okay, there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Pojack?
Motion to adjourn, Saqar.
Second, Trustee Light. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.